Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for coming out. I hope that what you'll see tonight will be much better than watching the Olympics, and it will provide better entertainment. However, I think watching the women play for gold tonight might be more fun than watching us, but we will try to do our best. Thank you very much for coming. I'd also like to, before I bring the meeting to order, introduce and welcome the nursing students from Quatland Polytechnic University who are with us tonight in the back. And there we go, big cheer. Excellent. And I don't know, is Connie here also? Oh, there you are, Connie. Connie Klimick is their leader, fearless leader instructor, program coordinator. Thank you very much for coming out again tonight. So with that, I'll bring the regular evening meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. And the first item on the agenda is the adoption of C of the agenda items. There are two things to... One is D1, Annabelle Young is being deferred to March the 5th, and that was approved at the afternoon meeting, so that will not be on the agenda. And there's a late delegation request would be D3, Mr. Burke Hick. So with those additions and deletion, I'd ask for a motion. Counsel Arneson, and second by Counsel Long. Show of hands, all those in favor. Opposed, carried. We now move on to the adoption of the minutes, the regular evening council meeting of February the 5th, 2018. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, and second by Counsel Davis. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed and carried. There are no presentations, so we move directly to delegations. And the first delegation is Mr. Scott Thompson from Northland Properties. If you could please come forward. And I think as same as last time, your name and you have five minutes to present. Thank you. I'll put my mic on there. Thanks.
My name is Scott Thompson. I represent Shark Club Liquor Store. Good evening, your worship, councilors. I'd like to thank Counsel Richter for bringing forward a motion in the last council meeting to reconsider zoning amendment number 100483. Counsel, we appreciate you being open to this matter going to public hearing. As it was clear from the last council meeting, the current liquor laws are complex, and this complexity can lead to situations where landlords and tenants oppose each other. I want to assure everyone, this is not a situation we wish to be in. The fact is, our business essentially is essentially breaking even at our current location. And as a result, we wish to relocate the business to Thunderbird Centre, where it will give us an opportunity reinvest in our business and the community as a whole. At Thunderbird Centre, we can reposition the liquor store so as to provide a more premium experience to our customers. We want to create an environment that encourages a greater percentage of our sales come from wine, and specifically B/C-VQA wines. The proposed location and tenant mix, along with further focus on wine clubs, will help us achieve this goal. As we all know, our lives are very busy, and time is very precious. Is there belief that the citizens of Walnut Grove would welcome the opportunity to save time by being able to cross-shop with a variety of local businesses at one location? These synergies help the local businesses, and in turn, help make our business viable again. When cities make mixed-use zoning decisions, they strive to create synergies between various uses, as it has been historically in the public interest to do so. Mixed-use development typically results in efficiencies of shoppers' time, higher utilization of land and parking, as well as decrease of traffic on local streets. I would argue the cross-use between our liquor store, grocery store, pharmacy, and a wide variety of other local businesses is a greater benefit to the citizens of Walnut Grove than at our current location, which consists of a bar and fast-food uses. This is why I believe staff has now twice supported the proposed land use amendment. To answer Counsel Richter's previous question about the name of the store, it is absolutely our desire to change the name of the store to more reflect the experience that we wish to create. Our current name is a product of old liquor laws that required us to have a name associated with the adjacent bar. It is also worth noting that being located next to the new Oakenthorn pub has negatively affected our business. Patrons of the Oakenthorn and the adjacent residential building tie up our parking for lengthy periods of time, ignore signage, and make it very difficult for our patrons to find parking. The current operating environment is also unsafe. Last Saturday night, there was a bar fight that originated at the Oakenthorn and ended up in front of our liquor store, resulting in blood all over our front entrance. This is not how we want to conduct business. This is unacceptable to us. This type of environment creates safety issues for both our staff as well as our patrons. These types of situations can be largely eliminated by relocating the store away from a liquor primary use to a centre that has 24-hour security and sufficient parking for our business. All of these attributes are at Thunderbird Centre. Thank you, your worship, councilors. We respectfully request your reconsideration of the proposed zoning amendment to go to public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. The next delegation is Mr. Burke Hick.
Your worship, members of council, I'll be quick and just try and add in a few other comments that are relevant to this application. I want to make it clear to focus on this is that the zoning at the Thunderbird Centre does permit a liquor store to be located there, and we wouldn't be here on this application if we were to put a small pub or a wine bar right beside the liquor store. But we don't want to open an unnecessary liquor primary license establishment in your community. What we're trying to do is just move a liquor store to a site where there's other retail uses that are compatible with this liquor store. Retail should be with retail. The proposed liquor store at the Thunderbird Centre is only about 500 square feet larger than the existing liquor store. As Mr. Thompson said, we want to focus that on area, on B/C wines, some of which are wines grown right here in the Fraser Valley in Langley. These days, we are licensing liquor stores around the province that are 6,000 to 9,000 square feet. This is not a humongous liquor store. The other concern was about the previous application to move here and the opposition from the then-owner of the estate wine store there, Katerina. I met with Katerina last week, and she's happy being a sommelier. Now she sold her store, it's moved to West Vancouver, and she's very much enjoying her life, but she has no qualms with what's going on here. The other thing I would point out to me is I think that we have to focus on the relevant considerations and the public interest, which is the merits of an application for a liquor store to be located in the Thunderbird Plaza. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to bylaws for final adoption. And I1 is Langley, 2018-2022, five-year financial plan bylaw, bylaw number 5342. Have a motion, please. Counsel Qualley, second by Counsel Fox. Any discussion on bylaw 5342? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I said last meeting, and I'll say again at this meeting, the base increase of 1.95%, I think is reasonable. I don't agree with taking it beyond that to the 2.49% that's included in this bylaw, therefore I will not be supporting it.
Thank you. I think it's 2.47%, but thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on I1. That carries with Counsel Richter opposed. Move on to I2, this Development Cost Charge Reserve Fund Expenditure Bylaw, bylaw 5343. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis, seconder. Counsel Arneson, and any discussion on I2? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification. Is this the bylaw that includes the proposed new debt that this budget will be putting forward?
Ms. Sinclair?
Through your worship to Counsel Richter, the debt is not funded from DCCs in this particular budget. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on I2. That carries unanimously. Move on to I3, this is user pay utility rate bylaws for 2018, bylaw 5344 and bylaw 5345. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis, second by Counsel Whitmarsh. Any discussion on I3? Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. And move on to I4, this is rezoning application number 100463, Lantara Developments Limited, bylaw 5253. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, second by Counsel Whitmarsh. Discussion on I4? Counsel Richter?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to this final adoption to increase the setback on lots 3, 4, and 5, the front setback, from 25 feet to 35 feet. So in other words, an additional 10-foot setback in order to protect the backyards and sun exposure of the existing homes on Ben's Crescent.
Thank you. Is there a seconder to the amendment? Counsel Arneson, open up the amendment for discussion. Counsel Long on the amendment?
Well, that's just a clarification, your worship. It's fourth reading. We're not really at third reading where we're asking for different works. Fourth reading, this is final adoption. Work's all been done, based upon third reading. So what kind of situation would we find ourselves in if this motion passed, your worship?
Backen?
Thank you, your worship. As the matter is received, third reading, which is really approval in principle, the applicant would be entitled to any costs incurred if this were to go back to third reading. I think the intent would be to actually have a public hearing, so we'd have to go back two steps and then consider this, so that would be effectively something we'd have to cope with.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I agree with Mr. Backen. I think this is kind of too late a stage to start doing this. I think this should have been done earlier if it was indeed the desire of council. Counsel Richter?
Yes, through you to Mr. Backen. Is there anything prohibiting me from putting forward an amendment at the fourth reading?
No, it's just the process and the implications thereof, so if council wished to go back...
So I'm perfectly within my legal rights to propose this?
Oh, yes, you are. Yes, there's no question to put an amendment.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's perfectly fine. I'm just saying I'm opposed to it for those reasons. Thank you. So I'm going to call the question on the amendment on I4. And the amendment fails. Counsel Fox, Counsel Whitmarsh, Mayor Fowles, Counsel Qualley, and Counsel Long opposed. We're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries with Counsel Richter and Counsel Arneson opposed. And we move on to mayor and council report. There we go. So good evening, everyone. I'll just wait for the PowerPoint to get up and running. So the Fort Langley Public Open House was held on Thursday, February 8th, at St. Andrews Church in Fort Langley. The event was well-attended, and there were even lineups at one point. The community is very interested in the proposed projects, which, if approved, will feature a cultural centre with a community museum, Indigenous museum, gallery spaces, library, presentation theatre, and conference centre. On Saturday, February 10th, was the first meeting for the 2018 Environmental Heroes Awards Committee. I'd like to encourage everyone to submit a nomination for a group or individual who does an outstanding job when it comes to protecting our environment. And the deadline for nominations is April 20th, and nominations can be found on our, I would think, on our website, we'll have it, and we're co-sponsoring this with a group of great organisations, The Times, Langley Times are involved, Langley Environmental Protection Society, Township of Langley, City of Langley, Toronto Canadian Bank, and Mark Warre's office. So those application forms can be obtained through those areas. And like I said, the deadline is April 20th, so there's some time. On Saturday, February 10th, was also the celebration of life for Reese Griffiths, which took place at St. George's Church in Fort Langley. Reese will be remembered for his many contributions to the community and his efforts to protect our environment. He received the Legacy Stewardship and B/C Nature Service Awards and was honoured as Langley City's Senior Citizen of the Year and as a special volunteer. In recognition of his wide-ranging contributions to the community, he was one of Canadian recipients of the Queen's Diamond Jubilee Medal in 2012. Reese is survived by his wife Annabelle and sons Peter and Tony, and he will be missed. He was a great contributor to our community. The evening of February 10th also saw the Vancouver Stealth retire the jersey of longtime player Curtis Hodgson. The National Lacrosse League team announced Captain Curtis Hodgson's retirement as he has become a vice-principal at Burnaby South Secondary. Hodgson has been a member of the Stealth since December 2004, and it's the only NLL team he's played with. Congratulations to Curtis. Great turnout that night, and they really did it up well, the Stealth, and a nice fellow with a young family moving on to his next part of his career, and congratulations. On Sunday, February 11th, was the annual Lunar New Year Gala event hosted at the church in the valley by the Live in Langley Chinese Association. This was a fun-filled event with plenty of entertainment, from comedy sketches to storytelling. This was the fourth year the association has hosted the event, and it's a great show and great local talent were there to entertain us. On Tuesday, February 13th, I was invited to tour a new building in Surrey, which focuses on the work-lives theme. The recently completed live-work project in Surrey is called Cambridge Walk and consists of six residential homes above a small commercial unit below. This building was nominated as a finalist in the 7th Annual 2017 Fraser Valley Commercial Building Awards and has won an award of merit. And I know the owner of this, the developer, sorry, the developer of this is anxious to do something similar in Langley in the near future, and just wanted to show off what he did in Surrey, and it was very well done and fit well in the neighbourhood. Looking forward to those type of developments coming to Langley. On Thursday, February 15th, was the annual City of Langley Volunteer Appreciation Event at the Coast Hotel. I'd like to congratulate all the volunteers who assist both communities and make us better each day. Also want to congratulate Ted Schaefer for his 25 years of service with the City of Langley as a councillor and most recently as mayor. Ted was given a gold watch Thursday evening by his council in recognition of his community's service. So 25 years of service on council and certainly much appreciated. On Saturday, February 17th, was the official unveiling of the Hugh Davis Way signage in Milner. Hugh was a pioneer farmer and a member of this community for 93 years. The Davis family was out in full force for this commemoration and council's honoured to present the road dedication for past, present, and future Davis generations. So, well done, Counsel Davis, and I know it was a great event, and to honour your father in such a way is truly a pleasure. On Saturday, February 17th, was also the celebration of the Year of the Dog at the Murrell-Arneson Library, and I'd like to thank librarian Sarwan Singh Randhawa for the invitation for hosting another great event. And if we can get this little video going, it's just a 20-second clip of one of the local dancers who put on a show here. No sound. Sorry about the sound. It's music. The dance is what's important. There we go. Just a little snapshot of what we were entertained with. And I know Counsel Arneson and Counsel Richter are there with me, and certainly great to have that celebration. So on Saturday evening, February 17th, was the Connect Place Gift of Love Gala in Abbisford. I was pleased to attend and help raise monies to support children and families. Connect Place provides an essential service to families when they need it most, and really great to see the turnout in Abbisford. They sold 100 more tickets than last year. They had it in the Abbisford Centre, and just great support from the community right across the Fraser Valley. And when we left, we were met with a snowstorm, so that was exciting. Upcoming events, Wednesday, February 21st, John Aldagh, our Member of Parliament for Cloverdale Langley City, is hosting a Let's Talk Seniors Housing Town Hall meeting, and this will be taking place at the Hope Community Church at 18625 Fraser Highway. From 1:00 to 3:30 in the afternoon, Mr. Aldagh will be the moderator for the event, and speakers include seniors advocate of B/C Central Mortgage and Housing Corporation, Affordable Housing Centre, B/C Housing Director of Regional Development, and Metro Vancouver Regional District Housing Committee Chair. So something to look forward to for February 21st on Wednesday. And on Saturday, February 24th, is the Coldest Night of the Year event. This walk and registration begins at the gateway of Hope, and it's always, well, I think tonight might be the coldest night of the year, but we'll make it cold on February 24th, so it's a great event and good to support that. Friday, March 2nd, is the 15th Annual Fraser Valley Cultural Diversity Awards in Abbisford. And so with that, if there's anything that council would like to add to the report with that?
I'm a nominee for the last one.
You want to be a nominee for...
Yeah. Cultural diversity awards.
All right, sure, we'll nominate you.
No, she is a nominee.
Oh, you are a nominee. Oh, sorry. Well, congratulations. I didn't... Congratulations. And I wish you the best of luck. Sorry, didn't know that. All right, so with that, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda. We'll get the sound fixed for next meeting. Okay, so we have other business. And at the February 5th, 2018 regular meeting of council, Counsel Richter provided the following notice of motion, so I'm going to... Oh, sorry, Counsel Long, you have something to add?
Well, I just wanted to add Metro report. You mentioned the seniors housing summit, and I'll be attending as a member of the housing committee, but I wanted to tell the folks about the hootenanny that's coming up in a couple of weeks at Campbell Valley Park.
Okay.
So there'll be some instructional interpreters there talking about owls and the significance of that. So it's at noon at Campbell Valley Park on March 3rd.
Okay, thank you. All right, nothing else, I'll clear that. And so now, Counsel Richter, I will put your mic on. Counsel Richter?
Thank you. I move that rezoning application number 100483, Thunderbird Centre, 2015988th Avenue, bylaw number 5328, be reconsidered.
Is there a seconder to that? Counsel Arneson, seconds. Any discussion on the reconsideration motion, the motion to reconsider? Seeing none, call the question. And the motion fails. Counsel Fox, Counsel Whitmarsh, Mayor Fowles, Counsel Qualley opposed. Thai vote. Move to M2, 208 Street Corridor, and this is Counsel Arneson has a notice of motion. Put Counsel Arneson on.
Oh, thank you, worship. I'm just going to read the end because it's quite long. Therefore, it's about the 208 Street Corridor, obviously. Therefore, be resolved that council direct staff to provide an update to the 2015 staff report outlining associated costs with the widening of 208 Street Corridor, as well as providing further options, including the opportunity for municipal borrowing and other best management practices relative to DCCs in order to facilitate completion of the 208 Street Corridor in a timely fashion.
Okay. Is there a seconder? Counsel Whitmarsh, seconds. Discussion on the motion?
Can I speak to that?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Okay. Got to find my notes here. Okay. I brought forward the notice of motion for council consideration because I feel that the current situation that we have is rather untenable. So we have a situation in which the concentration, the largest concentration of our densification is in a community that's only approximately between 30% to 40% built out, but we already have issues with traffic, which provides safety issues, it provides impediments to the movement of goods and services, and so driver impatience is a problem. We also have congestion at certain times of day, and so since we have, I could go on actually quite a bit, but we have a bus on the route now, and I just really feel that we have already been provided in 2015 with a staff report as to what it would take in order to look at that as a project and have the corridor completed. Now, the idea would be to update that information so that we could make a rational decision on what would be the best way. I think we have lots of tools in our possible toolbox in order to address this, but we need to have some, I think, political will at this point to revisit the situation. I have personally a number of ideas, but I think that it's something whose time has come, and therefore we need to look at this as a way to make it a safer community, to make it flow better, and especially with the protracted nature of the problem. I think we need to look at it sooner rather than later, and that's why I brought this notice of motion, which I hope council will support.
Thank you. Counsel Fox?
The 2015 report was a very, very expensive undertaking, and not much more of 208 Street's been done, so I'll be very interested to know what creative things we've got to do other than expropriate the land at a very hefty price, and how are we going to do that without burdening the taxpayers of the Township of Langley in doing that? So I'll be interested in hearing about that, but certainly when we discussed this in 2015, there was only one way to do it, and that was expropriate the land and put the infrastructure in ourselves, which, as we knew, I think was $46 million or thereabouts, which at a million dollars, a million dollars being 1% tax increase, you do the correct calculation, and you'll know how much it is. Even borrowing it, you add substantial funds on top. The other piece of that puzzle is that concerns me is that we've had the Willoughby Citizens Security Association come forward, and they had several things. So are we going to do this, or are we going to try to do what they want to have done? I don't think we can do it all. Sidewalks to nowhere, I heard all a bunch of other issues that they put on the table. So certainly I'll be interested in a staff updated report, but I think that we have to be very careful and cautious here how we move forward. I certainly, I'm looking at a fairly large crowd here, and if I said to you in the next 10 years, you're going to get a 46% tax increase just to fund 208 Street, would you do it? I'm not sure how many hands would go up, especially when you live in Cedar Creek Estates or other places like that. Anyway, I'll support the motion. I have concerns, I've got notes, and certainly when the report comes forward, I'll bring those forward for further consideration. Thank you.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think this is a good motion to bring forward. It's been almost three years then since the 2015 staff report. We've had significant growth in the Township of Langley and the neighbourhood of, in the last three years, and the neighbourhood of 12,000 to 15,000 people have come into Langley with the majority of those people up on the Willoughby slope. So I think it's a good undertaking to have staff just update what was done in 2015 to see where our costs are today, where we're sitting at with 208. This certainly is a very busy road, there's lots of challenges with it. I certainly am supportive of the idea of not increasing our taxes in order to pay for this, but I am interested in knowing more from staff as to how they see this progressing and how we might be able to move somewhat quicker on it. So I think it's a good report, a good timely report at this time with the growth in Willoughby, and I'll support the report.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yes, I'm thanking Counsel Arneson for bringing this forward. It's time for us to do something about this road. Willoughby has been developing out for 18 years now, and that road has not gotten any better in the 18 years. In fact, it's gotten worse. And I think probably the main reason why this has happened is because of the lack of emphasis on phasing. And if we had said in Willoughby that there will be phased orderly development, this probably wouldn't, this road probably wouldn't be in the condition that it's in today. I think we have an obligation to owe it to the taxpayers that have been there, whether it's for the last 18 years or the last 18 months. That road needs to be fixed. We have to come up with another way to deal with critical infrastructure when we're building areas out, and I think if anything, it makes the argument that we should be using phasing in Brookswood, Fernrich as well in order to avoid recreating the same problem down there. So thank you, Counsel Arneson, and nobody has said anything about 46% tax increase. I think that's a little bit on the exaggerated side.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thanks. I'm going to support the motion because I think I'd really like to have a better understanding of where we're at, what's changed in the last three years, so I would appreciate the update so that everybody can have a full understanding of the current situation and the status and what it would look like to fund this, and whether it is 46% or 12%, I think we just had a vote on half a percent that wasn't supported by council, so I'm not sure by part of council, so I'm not sure how even a full percent would be acceptable. So I'm going to support it because I'd like to understand where we're at and what that tax increase looks like, and if it is 46% or half a percent, we can figure out how to move the ball forward from there, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Well, we're voting on getting an update on the report, so I'm interested in its finding. Some on council already, I guess, have come to some conclusions, and apparently some mistakes have been made, and what has been done maybe hasn't been done correctly, so I think the report's going to tell us exactly what's been done and what can be done. And I think it's probably a little bit presumptuous to say that this is the reason why a road is in such a condition, so if we're looking for a report to answer those questions, I'd be supportive of that, but I don't think we should make any predetermined assumptions.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I really appreciate council support and at the very least, hearing more back from staff. I have done actually a fair amount of work on this...
I have done actually a fair amount of work on this to consider all the different stakeholders that would be affected by this, and I really think that this is a good opportunity to create an analysis of our current situation. Because, you know, as has been discussed, it is rather problematic and definitely seemingly of a longer-term nature. I would like to point out actually that there is, I think, a lot of opportunity to consider options that perhaps have not been considered before. And one of the things that I think is important to realise is in terms of the way that we have our DCCs set out, I think this would actually improve property values, and I think that there would be a really strong argument to be made that in fact we are increasing value and subsequently would get more DCCs from doing this, because I think it would be of very much interest to people moving there. It's a huge community benefit to have the infrastructure finished. I also think it would be good from a development point of view, and I'm really considering overall that all the other road networking that we're doing is going to start feeding traffic onto 208 and making a situation that's already very problematic even more problematic. So I think now is the time that we should be doing this, and so just thank council for the support for this.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Yes, thank you. I think that we should, it's a report, it'll give us an update. There are lots of areas on 208 that I see that are going to be in use in the next few months where there's development. It wouldn't be a problem to have an update because it is changing and just to see where we're going. So I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll just add my comments. It's great council wants to get a report on this. I think it's good to see what the costs are. I know when I first got elected, that was the very first question, one of the very first questions I asked staff is why don't we fix 208? And of course, it always comes down to funding. So it'd be good to see what this is and maybe councils, if there's some way to do it, certainly without impacting our tax burden too heavily, I'm sure council would look for it. I do want to remind council that not too long ago, we approved the widening of 208 overpass and looking forward to that opening. And that is one piece of that 208 strip that was within our purview to do. And I'm happy to say that it's going to be open soon, and council supported that, the majority of council supported that. I know the majority, that was good, it's a council decision, but it was what we could do through DCCs that were already collected to make improvements. So I know we did our part and we'll continue to look at doing our part, but we also expect development to do their part. So certainly something to look at, and thank you for putting this forward. So with that, I'll call the question on, this is M2. And it carries unanimously. And move on to M3, and this would be Counselor Qualley has a notice of motion. Counselor Qualley, I'll get your mic on. Here we go. Okay, you're up.
Thank you. So I'm not going to read all the whereas, it's fairly long, but I would like to speak to it after I read the therefore. So therefore, be it resolved that council direct staff to conduct research into practices of other jurisdictions and bring forward a report with a draft bylaw for council's consideration with respect to provision of electric vehicle charging infrastructure as part of new residential developments.
A move by Counselor Qualley, second by Counselor Fox, and Counselor Qualley, you should speak to it.
Thanks, yeah. I just feel like it's time for this to start happening within our residential development infrastructure. And I'm not necessarily talking about having to mandate full EV charging at every stall in residential. I don't know what this is going to look like, that's why I'm asking staff for some information. I know Metro's been working on several ideas for a number of years, but it seems to just keep falling further and further down their list. So the municipality continues to make investment in EV charging stations in our municipal facilities, and we have requirements for them in commercial facilities. So I think it's important that our residential infrastructure keep up with the demand for EV charging stations, or our municipal and public EV charging stations will be filled with all the residential users because they have no other means of charging. So that's the impetus for this request, and hopefully staff will be able to come back with some really great ideas because they are the experts in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arnison?
Oh, yes. Thank you, worship. And thank you, Counselor Qualley. I'm very much in support of this. I think that we don't necessarily know at this time what exactly it would look like, but at least the infrastructure that will be put in place will allow that to happen over time, and then we'll get direction from staff. I do believe that the City of Richmond has a bylaw that they've just adopted that outlines this, so that would be helpful in our discussion. So I will support this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on M3. And it carries unanimously. Is there any other business?
Termination.
Counselor Davis moves termination second. Oh, sorry, I didn't see it there. Counselor, sorry, Counselor Davis, hold that motion. Counselor Richter, you're up.
Yes, I'd like to put this notice of motion on for the next regular evening agenda. Whereas a significant property owner and developer has publicly expressed discontent with the treatment he has received from the Township of Langley and has said that he is now no longer able to proceed to redevelop relatively large sites within the centre of the commercial core of Fort Langley and has started to permanently board some of them up, therefore be it resolved that council invite Mr Eric Woodward to the next regular evening meeting of council to present and discuss his concerns about the Township of Langley.
Okay, any other business? All right, Counselor Davis.
Termination.
Okay, seconder. Counselor Arnison, all those in favour, pose carried. Thank you.